So, it is exciting for you guys to be here.
We'll start with just a few women and folks.
Because I suggest that.
Pick your seats. Alright folks, we're gonna go ahead and get started. My name's Mike Yow and I'm president of the Council Plus Community Alliance. Would you please raise rights for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution which founded our republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming, all in the audience. I want to thank all the city council candidates for coming. I would also like to thank the folks with the Western Iowa Labor Federation for coming. I want to read the mission statement for the Council Plus Community Alliance. The Council Plus Community Alliance will promote the city of Council Plus as a developing gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender family community, and will help assure the equality of all Council Plus residents. With that, I'm gonna pass it off to Scott Putney.
Hello everybody, thank you all for coming again, thank you candidates. My name is Scott Putney, I am the president of the Western Iowa Labor Federation. I also want to thank our co-host and partner here with the CBCA, Mike. Just want to read our mission statement real quick. The mission statement of the Western Iowa Labor Federation is to bring together area unions as one force to improve the lives of workers, their families, and our community. To bring economic justice to the workplace and social justice to the nation. We accomplish this mission by working to build worker power through political education and action, union organizing, community service programs, participation in the United Ways Annual Campaign, and educational programs for the entire community. With that, I want to hand it over to our moderator, who will introduce himself, Chris Merk.
Thank you all for coming out tonight, my name is Chris Merk. I'm a carpenter by trade and a lifelong resident of Council Plus. So, thank you all for coming out. It's a wonderful night out there for walking and I drove by the stuff going on there at Bayless. So, fantastic night, great lineup of candidates. What we're gonna do is, this is my first time doing this, as well as probably some of yours, so we're not gonna be very hard on each other, okay? So, tonight, we're gonna go through the questions that were sent out. We'll start from closest to me, working that way. On the next question, we'll start on the second person, hopefully giving everybody an opportunity to start and stop in the question. So, we're gonna have one minute to answer the questions. Our timekeeper, Laura, is going to hold up the yellow card for 50 seconds, as well as 10 seconds left either way you look at it, for the 30-second rebuttal. So, if somebody has done, if somebody has answered the question and somebody else would like to pick it up and do a rebuttal, that will be available for you, you have 30 seconds to do that. You will get the yellow card at 30 seconds, and you will get the red card at 30 and 50. The original person that answered the question will have an opportunity to then rebut from there. So, that's not as clear as mud, though, same goes for... Any questions on that? Clear? Alright, so as we're rolling through, we're gonna go through and give each candidate one minute to introduce themselves. Again, getting the yellow card at 50 seconds as well. So, we'll start here.
My name is Ron Cleveland, I've served on the city... My name is Ron Cleveland, I've served on the city council for about 11 years. I was mayor in '78. I've served in just about every commission in southwest Iowa. I have a prime commission for one, I've served on MAPPA. So, just about all the boards and commissions that the city council is responsible for, I have served on those boards. So, in any event, I'm waiting for the questions to be answered. And, so do I just pass the mic on?
There, Ron, I'll be real answering when we get to the mic.
I'll just zoom down the table.
There you go. Here, Ron, can we move your chair for a second there?
Okay.
There we go, gotcha. Alright, sorry about that, folks. Do I need to get up? No, you're fine, Ron, we're good. Alright, sorry about that, folks.
My name is Chad Hannan, born and raised in Council Plus, a generation resident. Obviously passionate about this community, that's why I'm running. I believe in open, honest conversation. I believe that through the power of positivity and honest communication, we can continue to push this community forward. Some of my community involvement, I sit on the executive board at the Chamber of Commerce in Council Plus. I also sit on the 712 Initiative Board of Directors. We're a relatively new organization made up of many older organizations. Items involving the farmers market, Potawatomi County Development appropriation, which was responsible for a lot of the 100 block redevelopment, Omaha standard and things like that. My wife Lindsay and I have three children, ages eight, five, and three. And more than anything, I'm looking to continue to push Council Plus forward for my kids, your kids, and hopefully my grandkids, if I'm ever that lucky someday. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Darian Scott. I want to thank you all for being here and for inviting me to participate in tonight's event. I'm an architectural designer, I work in an architecture firm where I work side by side with developers and investors on creating new attractions and areas of interest throughout cities. I design master plans for city developments and neighborhoods, and create sustainable designs for the government, public, and educational sectors. I've won many design awards for my projects, both regionally and nationally. I designed and built the first cross-laminated timber building in the state of Nebraska with my own hands. I am certified LEED Green Associate, which stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. And there's a standard for creating sustainable designed buildings that are energy efficient and environmentally friendly with the products that we use to build them and maintain them. I was born and raised in Council Plus, I'm a son, a brother, and a new uncle. My journey has now brought me to become your next city councilman. It is my goal to prove to you that I am the right choice for city council and bring forth my knowledge and expertise to the city of Council Plus. I currently serve on the city's planning commission as the first and only design professional. By having a design professional on city council, it will bring forth so many more opportunities for the city and ensure the city's image will be improved with the design specs and attractive developments in mind. In order to truly create economic development, we need to create attractive places to live and work that are focused on the community-oriented design. As your city councilman, I am certain I'll bring forth the best decisions to create a more prosperous city for our community. Thank you.
Nice tone. Let's just do an introduction, okay?
My name is Joe Gasolvo, I was born in this community, my family's all here. I am a father of two, I'm a business owner. I'm active as I can be and as much as I can be. I'll try and keep everything relatively short today because we're on a bit of a time crunch, but for the most part, I'd like to see, I'd like to see Council Plus grow, and I'd like to see it grow for the better. So, with that, I'll tell you more later.
Hello, my name's Robert Verchard. Many of you have seen before, I'm in the community, I'm active in politics. I'm a local activist for liberty. So, I've been living in Council Plus the last past five years, and I'm from Missouri Valley. So, I'm active with the Libertarian Party. And I was last year ranked for Florida Superbowl. So, some of you have literally have met me before and some of you have not. So, thank you for listening and...
Hi, I'm Sharon White, I'm currently on the city council. I'm serving in my ninth year on the city council. Prior to serving on the city council, I served on the planning commission for seven years and the Human Relations Commission. I've served on many, many boards and committees throughout the city. I've been president of Habitat for Humanity. I currently serve on Advance Southwest Iowa, which is the economic development branch for the city of Council Plus in Potawatomi County. I was president from its inception in 2014 through last year. And I serve on the Children's Square Board. It's one of the many things I'm passionate about, it's the children in our community. And I would like to continue serving citizens at Council Plus and continuing to make Council Plus a city community.
Good evening, thanks for having me here this evening. My name is Deb Bass. I am a grandmom, I am retired. I would approach this position just as I have all of my other full-time positions. I carefully chose my slogan, "Working Hard for Council Plus." I've built two businesses, and I've also been very involved in nonprofit startups that have turned into very successful organizations. I would bring all of these skills, I've done a lot of homework in preparing for this opportunity, and I look forward to answering your questions tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nate Watson, and I've been on the council for nearly eight years. I want to thank the Western Iowa Labor Federation. My father was a juryman Steve Fitter, and my mother has been a nurse at Jenny and a member of the union there for about 45 years. And I'd like to thank the Community Alliance, Council Plus Community Alliance. To my knowledge, the people of Council Plus are the first city in the western third of Iowa, and the first city in the Council Plus Omaha area to elect the first openly gay council member, me. And so I'm very grateful, thank you. Are great people and on the leading edge of all things. I was president of my neighborhood before I was on the council. I was also head of the Downtown Neighborhood Alliance, the five neighborhoods in downtown Council Plus. And I'm running because I believe there are a lot more things that we need to do as a city, and I believe I bring the experience and the temperament and the know-how necessary to continue to move forward, and I look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
Good evening everyone, my name's Roger Sando. I'm currently on the city council. Finished my four-year term. I was born in Sioux City, but moved here when I was with the baby. I graduated from Abraham Lincoln in 2004. I've been, my family opened Samuel Brothers Sign Company here in 1985. Been a big part of the community for over 30 years. Since the community elected me last time, I have become, I ran my campaign on investing in the youth, and I have become a mentor of teammates. I have gotten married and become a stepdad to two wonderful little boys, and I have a new daughter. And if re-elected this fall, I plan to work hard for the, continue to work hard for the citizens, be the voice of the people and the businesses in this community.
Stand in between people. Hi, my name is Lynn Brandigan, and it's my pleasure to be here this evening, and thank you very much to the organizers for making this event happen. I will bring to city council 12 years' experience, previously serving on city council, along with 36 and a half years of community service. And the reason I'm running is, city council to me is community service, not politics. And it's my opportunity to continue to give back to the community. I lost my campaign for reelection four years ago, which was bad but good, because it gave me time to work on the Dream Playground Project. And we're almost done, the last eight tickets are going in this week. So, I appreciate your time, I look forward to answering your questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you all. Ron, I'm gonna let you have the microphone. I've been a carpenter for a long time, so I'll just speak up a little bit. Alright, so we're gonna kick this off with the first question. This is question number eight in the list that you got. What can we change to attract more small businesses to Council Plus?
Well, that's a tough question, but I think one of the things that we have to do is get the Chamber of Commerce and the city council to start working together. And I think we've got TIP, which means Tax Incentive Planings. I think we can use that as a tool, but I think it's key that we have the Chamber of Commerce and city council working together, because the city council gets some leads through their community development, which is another branch of government within the city. And the chamber gets some leads, and I think at times they need to work together and try to see which one to best develop, somebody who's trying to come into our city. I know that I made a couple of trips, I went to Minnesota on a feed packing company and found out that they were actually slaughtering on sight. And we were already trying to get rid of the problems down at Beastland at the time. So, we certainly didn't want that. Does that mean I'm out? It means what? Oh, I got 10 seconds.
Okay, so my time starts now, right? Okay, great, thanks. You know, so kind of to Ron's point, economic development moved off from underneath the chamber's envelope not too long ago. That's now with Advance Southwest Iowa, I think they do an admirable job of helping to attract business to town. You know, I think, when I think about economic development, everyone talks about how they want to bring businesses to town and things like that, and it's really easier said than done. You can throw a lot of money at folks and try to get them to town, but that doesn't always solve your problems. One of the areas where I'm focused on is workforce development. How do we continue to help the businesses that are here grow? We have a major shortage in workers right now, especially skilled labor. And working for one of the largest employers in town, we have over 100 open jobs right now. Those applicants either aren't trained or they're not coming through the door. I think we have to address that, and I think we have to figure out how to work with our youth or the folks that aren't currently employed and help them get the training that they need to help the businesses that we have grow.
What can we change to attract more small businesses to Council Plus? Our image. As an architectural designer, the best way to attract new businesses to our area is to design and create new places for people to work. The architectural standards of the city currently has and has had for a long time, it's pretty poor. We have no LEED certified buildings or well-certified buildings, which are certifications that are solely designed to focus on the health and wellness of the occupants and their surrounding environments. By developing new places and renovating old existing buildings to be modified with these standards, we'll begin creating spaces in the city that people actually want to go to. Building orientation, natural daylight, natural ventilation, human comfort, these are top priorities in today's buildings. While also promoting active lifestyle, by promoting walkability, bikeability, where the requirement of vehicle transportation is not necessary. So, is it 30 seconds on the questions?
So, when this goes out, 10 seconds.
That's 10 seconds out. You get 50 seconds to put that out. You get 10 seconds to wrap up, and there you go. At 30 seconds, it's kind of a shot in the dark, so. You're getting ready for the thing.
The question is, let's see, how do we attract more small business to Council Plus? There's not, we have a minute, so we gotta make it short. We need to support the small business that we have, but to some of the points earlier, it is really hard to find, trust me, qualified folks for many number of jobs. We need to work with the schools a bit to train the workforce. We need to work with Chamber of Commerce to try and draw outside folks in. We need to work with state, county, you know, as a team, tax-wise, to reinvest into the folks that have put their neck on the line to employ people in our community as it stands. You go to work every day, you bust your butt all day long, and at the end of the month, there's not as much left as you thought. But at least you can go to bed at night saying, you know what, I employed, in our case, 20-some people, you know? But it's hard to get folks that are qualified, so that'd be my point.
How to attract small business to Council Plus, there's not an easy answer to that. The only thing we can do is limit barriers to the free market, and businesses will come themselves. We have, just have to make that open environment for small businesses to come and entrepreneurs to come to Council Plus. So, we have to get rid of barriers.
So, Advance Southwest Iowa works every day to help small businesses, and we've been able to bring in and assist some expansions and some new small businesses in Council Plus. Some of the things that they face are availability of land. It's very difficult in Council Plus to find especially industrial land. So, that's something I've been working on, I'm gonna continue to work on. But one of my goals right now is to make Council Plus a business-friendly community when it comes to new businesses trying to figure out what are the rules. I'd like Council Plus to be known as a standout city for small business development. And one of the things that we can do is that our city departments, we can assist those businesses by having one point person that they deal with through their entire project, because it's really difficult. You talk to the planning department, you talk to the building department, you talk to the engineering department, and you know, you call one department and they say, "Well, I'm done with my part, you need to call this department." So, I would like to have a one-point person who's gonna help you work it through it and tell you what those timeframes are and what the requirements are, and make sure that you have an easy process getting through.
Top of track shoes on. I would agree with several of the things that have been commented on here. And having started an IT consulting company and recruited many IT consultants from around the world, I can tell you, there's every kind of trick you can think of. Business incubators, skilled workforce requires things that we're doing, such as Trade Works Academy, Career Advantage, that was just announced yesterday, business referral centers, small business forums, tuition forgiveness for students to get them here, property tax forgiveness for a startup, develop a roadmap and small business license process like Sharon was talking about, with the city have like a nurse navigator like we have in healthcare. And then our Small Business Development Center does a great job as well, but I think we need to tie all the pieces together. So, I'm out of breath.
Well, the two parts that I believe that I could help with if I continue to be on the council are, number one, the, I want to do what we do with the housing code, which not only did, when we moved to active rental inspections, did we work with landlords to find over 2 dozen ways to make, to remove unnecessary, business unfriendly provisions of the code, and to remove a lot of language that was out of date and laws that hadn't been enforced in decades. I want to go through, and it would take four years to do so, I want to go through all the remaining other chapters, which I looked, and since 1853 when we've been Council Plus, I can't see that we've ever completely restated all our laws. I want it updated to modern English, I want people to be able to read the laws. I want to get rid of laws that don't make sense or haven't been enforced in 80 years, and remove unnecessary red tape when it's not needed. I also think, the second thing that I believe I can help with in city government is the way of life. You not only have to create the jobs, but you have to encourage people to live here as well, not just work here. So, I think that's continuing investment in our parks, including in our riverfront, public-private partnership.
So, it's not an easy question, there's a number of different things that can be done. You know, first things first, we have to create a compelling story about Council Plus. You know, I think it's a science figuring out what we have to offer and what our story is to tell. I think one of the first things we can do is take the artwork off 20th Street Bridge. I think that'll attract more small businesses. We need to focus on, you know, we have a bunch of shovel-ready sites. I think a bunch of communities have shovel-ready sites. So, I think part of that is, that's not unique to us. What's unique to us is our, the Council Plus Community Schools have an over 85% graduation rate. The Little Center Schools have an over 90% graduation rate. I couldn't find St. Albert, but we have kids that are graduating this community, we need to keep them here. The other thing we need to do is take care of the small businesses that we do have. We need to take advantage of the Small Business Development Center at Iowa Western Community College with Sue Pitts. It's a great resource that we need to take more advantage of. And with keeping small businesses too, Council Plus is winning, and everybody wants to be on a winning team.
Bad thing about being at the end is I sat over there and I kept crossing things off my list. Small business is the backbone of the nation and of any thriving and growing community. I didn't mention in my opening, I am a small business owner. And I think that we're already, the question was, what can we change? I think we're already changing. Look at the Kitchen Council, which is in position to help small businesses in the food industry. Yesterday, I went to a ribbon cutting at Career Education, the office of Woodbury, and they, their goal is to assist in the training and education so that we can have a skilled workforce. Today at Rotary, someone mentioned that Advance Southwest Iowa just received a grant, they're gonna hire somebody to handle entrepreneurship and small businesses, it's a difficult word. Roger already mentioned the port, someone else mentioned SBA. I think that all of these different entities and organizations should work together as key partners to continue to attract, retrain, retain, and further develop small businesses. Thank you.
Alright, so we'll kick back over here for question two, if anybody's got anything to say about that. Chad, we'll start this off, the question, forgive me, it's a long one. In 2017, Iowa Legislature dismantled Chapter 20, the 40-year-old law that gave the public sector workers collective bargaining rights in Iowa. The change to, the change in the law moved mostly to mandatory topics of bargaining to permissive, sorry, to permissive topics, meaning both labor and management would both have to agree on them to put them into contract. Would you openly support negotiating permissive topics of bargaining with the city employees? Now, I also have someone here, if anybody's unfamiliar with the question or has any questions, we have somebody that will help us on that.
Okay, I'll get started. So, you know, I don't think there is necessarily a magic bullet on this one. So, my opinion is, we sit down, so I work in purchasing for a very star. And I sat across the table and negotiated quite a few things. I think no matter what we have to do, both sides need to bring what's important to them and what's important to your workforce, and we need to talk it out. We, I don't think you go into any negotiation with a closed mind. If it's important to your workers, guess what? The workers here, especially city employees, they're people at Council Plus. So, if it's important to them, it's important to you. they're people at Council of Love, so if it's important to them, it's important to us. So you need to sit down with an open mind, give people an opportunity to explain why it's important to them, and make the best judgment possible, not only for the city, but for our citizens.
I understand there's multiple sides to every argument. There's pros and cons to every law and not every law benefits every person or business. The changes here, while they might not be good for the betterment of the state, they might not be better, be the best for the city of Council of Love. I would like to take a closer look at this and would like to personally talk to, interview some of the union representatives and those that are affected by this. And have them explain how they were personally affected by this, how they feel the state did what was maybe best for the eastern side of the state, but maybe not for the western side of the state. That does happen. So I would like to get more information on this and be able to make a more informed decision on this topic. And maybe I can advocate for this for the better of the city of Council of Love and its community.
So, would I openly support negotiating permissive topics? Simply, yeah. If you, if you interview an employment office, wherever maybe, you're gonna discuss every part of that application, right? When the contract's up, let's discuss it, that's fine. We're all neighbors, it's a local event. In reality, this is a total state issue that's kind of outside our scope, but we have to control, we can control, which is not bad. Again, you know, these are our neighbors that we're dealing with. If they have a discussion that they'd like to have about something, that's fine. Now we can all agree to disagree. You don't have to take the job, I don't have to give you the job. I mean, you know, if that comes to get past, it's what it is. But again, we need to work together to get to an end result that we're all comfortable with, so.
Can we get some clarification because it's, if, can we? Julie, would you like to explain, where's Julia? Would you like to explain how it isn't outside of the city council's scope and that is exactly what the city council?
So my name is Julie Day Gable and I'm a union representative with ASME and we represent a lot of public sector employees. I'm just gonna briefly tell you.
Microphone, microphone.
Sorry. I'm Julie Day Gable and I'm a union representative with ASME and we represent a lot of public employees, including the city of Council of Love. And when the law changed in 2017, it created two different classes. It created people that negotiate under public safety and people that don't. When they did that, they took a lot of mandatory subjects of bargaining, such as hours of work, shift differential, sick leave, occasionally, a whole host of items, and made them permissive. Meaning that your employer can negotiate those items with you and the buck stops with city council. I can tell you that currently, the city council negotiated very few permissive items with the union here in the city of Council of Love. When many of my other groups and groups across the states, they did negotiate a lot of permissive items. So our hope is that the city council will realize that they are the ones that direct the negotiators, that go with the city, and that there is a lot in the city council's purview to be able to do.
How many people in this crowd are in the unions right now? Like, less than half the room. But, I know you guys feel betrayed with the Republican Party because the Republican Party made this law last year because this was the, the governor of Iowa was pushing for this law. Honestly, when I go to jobs, I haven't joined any union jobs during my time of working in Council of Love, but I did look at the front print and honestly, I know, I know last, in 2017, you guys were protesting in fact, you're wanting vacation time, certain policies that you wanted because the city took them out. I hear you, and I'm willing to have discussions of all those topics at Iowa City Council members. So, we can have discuss, a discussion during a city council meeting and hope that answers your questions on this. But everyone has a right to work.
Gives us time to reset the clock.
Time comes against your tongue.
Okay, so, being current city council member, the ones that are up for reelection, you know, we have to look at this a little bit differently because this was the first year that we, last year was the first year that we negotiated contracts, that the city negotiated contracts under the new law. And there was a lot of people upset that more permissives were not included, which I can understand. You know, the one thing that I have to say is that I represent all citizens of Council of Love, including union members. There are permissible topics that I would consider including. It's just gonna depend on which ones, you know. It's very difficult to find that balance between what the union wants and what the non-union citizens can afford. And that's what I always have to look at, you know, is that we have departments that have more than one union in that department. So I've got a person sitting here doing pretty much the same work as a person sitting there, that have completely different terms, they have different vacation, they have different sick leave. As a city, first of all, it's very difficult. We've got four unions we negotiate with. So having all of those different terms make it very difficult. But I would consider some permissives.
I too have been involved in a number of negotiations throughout my business experience. And I met with several department heads to talk about this, just to make certain I understood it. And there is an effort, because of the different union agreements, and I agree with Sharon, you're looking for consistency so that you, first of all, foster a strong workplace and consensus between the workers so they're not wondering why different people have different benefits. And a lot of it was just trying to ease the effort of negotiation. And what they did was they took the terms that were in the existing agreement and put them into the policies and procedures of the city.
It's not the contract.
No, it's not the contract, I agree, it's the policy and procedures manual. So, you know, with that, I can certainly understand the need to look for efficiency and to be open to discussing this, but as a first-time effort, I think, you know, it's, a lot was learned by both sides.
In my day job, all of my employees, other than my management staff and my lawyers, are members of unions, so I very much respect the right to collectively bargain and support the existence of unions. I think in my role as a city council volunteer, as a member on your city council, I have to look at a lot of different concerns, I have to look at the city interests as a whole. One of the things, as I said to many of the unions at the time last year, was I am concerned of folks in the same office who may be in a different union who have different benefits, different tiers of benefits. And so that concerns me, it also makes it difficult to administer. If we could find a way, as I educated at the time, where everyone could be agreeable to have a similar benefit package, I would be willing to consider it through the permissive route. Now I will say, the other thing I said at the time was, I thought the state legislature was chicken about the way they did it. I think they picked on the least powerful compared to the unions they did not touch. I thought that was a political action. I think we really ought to work together and I did, the committee, I'll just finish up a sentence, I apologize. This is an important point, if I may. The committee that was to be created to work through these policies has been underwhelming. I'll be very honest, I've not been impressed with it. If that does not improve, to keep my promise to allow sufficient input from workers, I would be far more receptive to restoring all of the permissives if that is not restored because I would keep my word to the workers.
As Nate and Sharon said, it is a unique situation we're in with the state. Just to be clear, the state changed the law, obviously the city council didn't. The point is, we want our employees to be happy. And to be upfront honest, I voted to not have the permissives in the contract this year. That's real, you can go back and look at the voting record, I did. I have since educated myself, I've talked with a number of different people that have represented unions, I've talked to people that are in them, talked to people that aren't. As they said, we have a unique situation, two people sitting here could be part of two different unions doing the same exact job. It is, it is a, I don't wanna say tough, but it's a unique situation, as I've said. I would be open, in talking to the people I've talked to, I would be open to putting the permissives back in because it doesn't cost the city any money. It doesn't cost the city anything to put the permissives back in. And at the end of the day, our employees are our biggest asset and we want them to be happy working for us.
Okay, why were you looking at me when you said, do we need clarification? It's because I called for clarification, so thank you Scott for talking with me last night. You know, I would approach this issue as I approached any issue when I served on the council, and that is to gather as much information and background as I could. This obviously is a change that happened when I was not on the council. So all I can say at this point is, I am certainly open to the issue and I would need definitely to sit down with the people affected by this issue and hear concerns, hear the information, and then gather all of that analysis and make a decision. So, but I'm certainly open to it.
And I do apologize, you were the first one that caught my eye.
I just thought you guys were talking.
Well, I think the question within itself gives really, tells you the whole story. It says, "In 2017, the Iowa legislature dismantled Chapter 20, which is collective bargaining. The forty-year-old law gave the public sector workers collective bargaining rights in Iowa." Well, I believe in collective bargaining, I believe in Chapter 20. And make no mistake about it, this is union busting, plain and simple. I lived in the union for fourteen years when I worked as an electrician on the UP railroad. And this is so blatant, you know, that this law was in effect for forty years and then they just toss it out the window and create a monster. And I think there's gonna be a lot of problems. And what really gets me is, is one day you'll turn on the radio or you're watching TV and I'll try to make this fast. All of these employees are out here, they're moving the snow, they're the greatest things that ever was, you know, and then they come to negotiations, wow, you know, they nick one diamond to that. I know how it works.
All right, let's move on to the next one. So in your view, how do you feel the city's rental inspection process has been working? This is question number six.
Again, I would need more information on how this process has been working. The tenants would probably tell me that it's not working at all and the landlords might say it's working great. So I guess I'd want to talk to like the inspectors and ask them how they feel it's working. I mean, they're the ones that are out there boots on the ground performing the inspections, so how can we make it more efficient so that both sides can feel that it's a benefit and that it's working appropriately? As I sit here today, I'm not aware of any complaints, so maybe it's because I'm not yet on city council. Nobody has told me what their complaints are. So I would want to talk to the landlords, tenants, and inspectors. And once I'm educated on all three sides and I can better advise what I think should happen.
This is a topic that I've had a lot of discussions with, different folks on different sides of today, yesterday, well, for the last like six to eight months, but aside from that. The inspections were intended to do something that I think to an extent they have done to more or less route out the slum lords in town. Though from time to time, as with most regulation law enforcement, sometimes isn't always the best. There's still cases that exist that shouldn't, but we are much better than we were. At the same time, there's aspects of it that disallow freedoms to renters that would regularly be given to owner-occupying folks. For example, I cannot bed in my basement even though it's not conforming because it's my basement, I can do what I want. But if you rent, that is not such the case. So, all in all, we have to work together, as with everything else, to continue to make it work and to make some improvements.
Okay, I think I heard this question came up to me once when I was preparing signatures. But anyways, I do have a bad story when I was renting an apartment down in McManawha. I had a landlord that lived in Arizona and out of sync, like, for the, like, one of the pipes broke, which for the shower, it's for the basically the shower head, the dripping water head. So that broke, I had to dump it, the hose, into the sink for it to be in the front and actually use it and sorry, rent, I basically did the rent naked. And so the situation got to the point, there was leaking water underneath the sink and that attracted a sewer rod. And then, then my landlord fixed the plumbing, but it was a fridge, he got someone to fix that right away. So anyways, I made sure I had a landlord that lived in the same, where I was living for, I made sure now the landlord's local. So, I hope nobody has any bad, hard stories of mine.
So I think the rental inspection program is working. I know that it was quite contentious when it all started, but the feedback that I'm getting is that we are, right now, we're in the second year of the second three-year cycle. And the compliance rates are really up, landlords now know what to expect. I've had a couple of landlords that were absolutely against it and very upset with me when I worked to pass that, who've since come back to me to tell me that the program's working. It wasn't nearly as bad as they thought it was going to be. I will tell you that when Nate Watson and I would put hundreds of hours into writing that, meeting with landlords and tenants, and one of the things that we put into that was tenant responsibility. So if they're the ones that took the property out of compliance, they have to be held responsible. And I'm happy to inform you that tenants have been fine, they have been written citations for this. It's something that needed to be done. As a real estate appraiser, I can tell you that I was seeing properties that were not fit for human life. I think that has changed. Some of the worst have gotten out of the business because they didn't want to make those changes.
Well, I too have met with several landlords and it's interesting because they did comment that at first they were very much against it, but that the process that the city council at that time went through to revise some of their requirements, they thought were very worthwhile and that they were listened to. They did suggest that perhaps they could schedule the rental inspections for the city at the same time they do the Section Eight, because it is a bit inconvenient for them to do two different kinds of inspections at different times, particularly getting the renters to comply with having the place ready and available. They did comment that with just two inspectors, it takes a while to get through, but that they feel that things are going fairly well. And in the end, it was a good thing for Council of Love and we have Omaha across the river looking at the same thing. So, I think it was a good thing.
Sharon White and I wrote that law. And we tried very hard to meet all of the legitimate concerns as we could, of all concern. For example, one of the provisions in the existing law that landlords had to certify to was that their basement walls were literally pumped, which there's no such thing on the face of the earth, especially if you have like me, a hundred and twenty-nine-year-old house, right? So we made that law more reasonable. It was genuinely a health and safety issue because there are a good number of folks in our community, not everyone who rents is of low income, but disproportionately so compared to those who own. And so I was very concerned speaking for myself of the little guy who the vast majority of landlords were doing their job and continue to do their job, but there are a few bad actors, and I'm afraid we probably all know who they are, who own a fair amount of property, and did, and that number continues to- and did, and that number continues to go down. And they took advantage of the little guy. And I, I met a lot of families and I just could not live with that. We passed a reasonable compromise, it passed 3-2. I would be remiss if I didn't mention when Brennan again was the third vote to get that barely through.
I spoke with a number of landlords as well. As Nate and Sharon said, it is, I think it is going well. It's, it's not perfect, but nothing really is. You know, the thing about some of these people are going through their second inspection and it's true, at first it was scary for some of these landlords. I know some, some people have sold them off, some people have bought more and done a good job at, at keeping their houses up. The fact of the matter is, some people take care of their houses better than others and that's, we're, we're working on that. One thing that I think, in talking with some of the landlords, I think we could do is, and this landlord offered up a house actually, where we could have all of our inspectors go in and see what they, see what they see before anybody else. And everybody compares votes. And then, that'll help make our city more efficient and help the landlords know what we're looking for when we're, when we're going in for inspection. So, I think that, that could be a good thing. And as Sharon said, they are citing the tenants because these landlords aren't going in and taking out the smoke detectors and telling people to live in the basements where there's no meth.
The feedback I've gotten regarding this issue has been probably 98% positive. I, it was not a fun issue when it was before the council and Sharon and Nate and I really stuck together. And I'm not an appraiser, I'm not an attorney, so they were the brunt of the project, but I never wavered in my belief that everyone deserves a safe place to live. After the, the change was passed, I did a ride-along with a couple of different inspectors just to see the process. And I stood quietly in the corner, not to get in the way, but I just wanted to, you know, see what exactly happened on, on an inspection. And they were very thorough, they were very polite to the business owner. And, you know, the absentee landlords, if they don't want to keep up their properties, then they can just go away. There are a lot of responsible property owners and I, I think they truly were not afraid or so much afraid of the change because they already took care of their properties and made sure that their tenants had a safe place to live.
Well, I know this was a state-ordered inspection and I think they set down some guidelines also, it's something the city hadn't done for, what, a decade? But I have not heard a lot except landlords don't like it because the city's forcing them to do repairs and bring the buildings up to code. And I think that's a good thing. We had a situation, I'll make this fast, the year I was mayor, I got a call from my secretary and that lady on the phone was very distressed. Right across the street from City Hall, and what happened was they, they come in there and they put a hot water heater in this very small apartment with no vent. Well, carbon monoxide start building up, they're getting headaches, they're all vomiting, they're sick. And she called our office. And so, Ray Poby walked in the door and we went over there with the fire inspectors and there was no vent. We got him out, we called Family Services, got him out of there, got it taken care of. And to make the long story short, our building inspectors were citing the landlord for that and nothing was happening. When he went upstairs to talk to the city attorney, we found out the citations were all in his desk drawer. A week later, the city attorney was fired. So, this is not a real simple thing. It can get real thick, it can get real sticky and there's a lot of people involved. Thank you.
It's, it's definitely tough, as my chair gets caught on this. It's, it's tough being the 10th person to answer the question and saying something that all these folks haven't. So, you know, I'm gonna keep it brief. Like everyone else here, I think we all talked to some landlords, mostly positive, right? This is what's best. It protects the landlord, protects the folks that live there. So, one area where I'll touch on that we haven't touched on yet, it protects our fire and police. My brother-in-law's a firefighter. I would be much more nervous about him going into a burning house if it wasn't required to have smoke detectors. If there weren't some of these things, you can't stay in a basement where there's not a window that you can crawl out of. Those are the things that keep my family up at night, thinking about my, my brother-in-law and stuff like that. So, for that, you know, I think you, you guys deserve some, some definite, some definite props. As with any regulations, I think we need to make sure that they're fair, they're consistent, and they're equal for everybody, right? For the big guy, for the little guy, and that we don't try to over-regulate these landlords. Thank you.
Joe, you're gonna get the next question, this will be number one on the sheet. So, what influence or role should the Iowa West Foundation play in the city's decisions, elections, projects, and management?
So, thank you for that question, it is a wonderful question. Iowa West is a charity. You know, they, they make decisions on grants. They're not elected to the city council. They don't, I mean, for the most part, they do their thing, city council does their own thing. Now, that being said, if the city council wants to do something for the city as a project, anything of that nature, like anyone else, they can submit to Iowa West and say, "Hey, I'd like a grant for this." Then they can do what they have to do, make a decision as to whether or not they want to finance that or give to that, give a grant for this, whatever it may be, Project X will say, that's on them. Do they get to vote in city council? No, they're not, I mean, they're not an elected group. Same time, it could be argued that when someone's paying for something, they could also dictate how things are done. I mean, the discussion could be had, but, long story short, not.
The Iowa West Foundation, I would hear them out, but you guys' opinions matter more to me than a unelected board. And I know the city had some issues with this board because some things happened and then some stuff they go through and they pulled out of a deal two years ago. I think that was with the downtown Broadway stuff. Anyways, yeah, they, I'm basically, I would be glad to hear them, but also be preferred to hear you guys' opinion on the, this foundation, because I don't know much about this foundation, honestly. It's been kind of new, this organization's been kind of new to me, so. And I'm getting ready to. Yeah, so, I'm all for charities, because I'm, I'm a advocate for free markets and charities are great and we, everyone needs a helping hand.
These are lengthy questions for only one minute to answer. What I would tell you is, is that, it was said a few minutes ago, when we as a city ask for a grant, we have to follow the terms of the grant. And if we don't, we lose that award, just like any other organization. It doesn't matter whether it's Iowa West Foundation or any other nonprofit. We request grants from a lot of different organizations. As far as they're being involved in elections, they're a 501(c)(3) and by law, they cannot be involved in elections and I'm not aware of any time that they ever have been. Now, that does not bar their voluntary board from being involved. They don't give up their rights to have a political opinion just because they're on a board. And then the last thing that I would say, as far as projects go again, we submit a project plan, we say we're gonna do this, if we don't, they can pull their award and that's their right, as any nonprofit has that right to do. And then the last part of that question, as far as management, I know of no circumstance where Iowa West Foundation has anything to do with city management. So, whoever submitted the question, if you want to elaborate on it, I'd be happy to address that portion of the question. I'm gonna add on to what Sharon said. Iowa West is a foundation, it is a funder. People apply to them for money and they decide who will receive the grants. And yes, they do expect that you follow certain guidelines and they do follow up, but they are simply a funder and they have spent over $200 million in Council Bluffs. I've traveled the country over, I know many that have said that they would do anything to have an Iowa West Foundation in their committee, in their community. They also, the people on that board spend a tremendous amount of time reviewing these grants, making these decisions, identifying the initiatives in partnership with the city. They do community needs assessment, they just completed a recreational needs assessment. We just had a ribbon cutting for the pickleball court yesterday because it's the fastest-growing sport. And a visitor commented that that's the best pickleball court that they've seen anywhere in the country. So, I think we owe a lot to them and I certainly want to continue to see a positive working relationship.
Thank you. As a private foundation under the IRS, under 501(c)(3) tax code, they are prohibited, as is any foundation or any public charity, from participating in candidate elections. And I'm not aware of the organization having done so. It's similar, we have a law that applies to all corporations in Iowa, no corporation. So, any company that has EKAN's title can give money to candidates, they can't even put a sign on their property for a candidate, that violates state law. Because in Iowa, we believe that elections ought to be handled by individuals, not by corporations. And I support that. And so, within the situation, as a private citizen, not as an elected official, are there times that I disagree with Iowa West? Yes. Are there times I disagreed strongly and publicly? Yes, you just have to look in the record, particularly with regard to at one point, some neighborhood initiatives, I disagreed strongly with their approach. And I'm glad to see that they've now gone my direction. My original direction helped create or recreate over 16 neighborhood groups and they've gone my direction, but they're, you know, they have a right to do that. I don't control them as the government and they don't control the government.
Iowa West Foundation is an essential part of our community. They do a lot of wonderful things for our community and the biggest thing that, that I take out of this question is, they need to hire a PR person. I, I told Pete Doolan about that several times and I think he's taken it to heart of it. They do some wonderful things for our community that nobody knows about. 99% of the things that they do, I would think everybody would agree upon. There's some things that they don't. I've been on the end where I don't agree sometimes. That doesn't mean that I take it personal or I have any, any ill will towards them, but I think the only negativity surrounding Iowa West Foundation is their involvement in politics. And I don't think they should be, I don't think they should have any influence over elected officials that sit on the city council board.
I'd like a rebuttal on that, if possible. My time.
Is this a debate?
No, if you were here, they'd explain that we have rebuttals and then you'll have a chance to explain that before you get out of here. So, what I would say on that is, is that these are the kind of accusations that come out without any examples. And it sounded rather pointed. And I would tell you that I do my homework and nobody has influence over me, but I happen to read everything I get. I happen to investigate everything I get as a city council person. So, you need a sinuation that they have any more influence over me than anybody else that's bringing me an issue as a city council person is patently false. I would tell you that if you can show me an instance where they were involved in politics, we need to know about it because it is against the law. So, I find it interesting that that's put out there and that's my rebuttal.
It wasn't directed at anybody, it was a general statement that they shouldn't be have control. And to be fair, I did hear the rebuttal thing, I just didn't know it was a debate. And Mike, will you clarify, your email said this thing started at 6:30.
Yes, so was mine.
So, I showed up at 6:15, the email we got yesterday or two days ago said this thing started at 6:30, so I was not late from his email. You guys started early to me.
I just want to make clear that I, I think we have to be very careful in our language, particularly those of us in, currently in a public trust, to, to avoid even the appearance of insinuating something. And so, speaking for myself as about our personal privilege, I am an honest person. I make mistakes like everybody else, but I'm not bought or sold by anybody. And so, I make my decisions, including my mistakes, on good faith. And if elected again, I'll continue to do so.
I am not gonna ad lib, I'm going to read what I wrote. Iowa West Foundation's role should be and is, as one of the city's key partners, they've been a good partner and they've been instrumental in so many economic development projects, quality of life projects, and those projects and their investment benefit each and every one of us. Council members are the ones making the decisions, not Iowa West. And council members should not be influenced by them or anyone, and I don't believe they are. My previous record serving on the, on the council for 12 years, I, I think those of you who know me know I'm pretty independent, pretty outspoken, not shy. I do research the topics so that I know how I'm voting when I go to the, to the council meeting. And every council member should be an objective, independent thinkers who are committed to making decisions that benefit the city as a whole. And if elected, that's exactly what I did before and it's exactly what I will do again.
Lynn said the same thing I did, that Iowa West shouldn't have any control over city council members.
My rebuttal is, yes, I said that.
Bob, you the same thing?
Yes, it's your turn, brother.
Okay, Mike. Well, let's, Mike, let's be clear on this issue. Iowa West gets their money from the casinos. Iowa West was created by a gaming commission that thought Iowa West locally could probably handle the money a lot better than they could from Des Moines, Iowa. Now, Iowa West has done a lot of good things, but Iowa West has also squandered millions of dollars. Look at the giant rabbit down here on South Main, the fishing poles on Broadway大道, the junk on 23rd Avenue, the molecule man, how far do you want me to go? I could just go on forever. Millions, millions of dollars thrown down the drain because of, what would I call, monuments to their ego. But now I guess we're on the second or third CEO. But I talked to an attorney about this and, and there's some legal language that says they have to have a contract before you could sue them. Well, they walked away from the $20 million police, new police station. Just one other thing, they violated the public trust. Remember, we'll get the casinos and our taxes will go down.
I'm pretty sure everyone in this room knows the Iowa West Foundation funded the scrap metal art on 25th Street, 24th Street Bridge.
23rd.
23rd Street Bridge. But no, I was at, I was working at the truck shop a couple of years ago and I had a trucker ask me, "Is that bridge the gate of hell, the gates of hell?" So, it's like, I have actually seen a post like, that bridge, this offends me, this scrap art, that, I, 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 this, oh, the, the, the Iowa West Foundation might do some art projects, but now the art projects are very lights and the, the, they're not representative as part of Black Scores that are big news there. And there's a story of a bunch of someone taking Black Scores out in Kansas City and now they have Black Scores.
Ron is, Ron is accepted to let Deb go ahead and revise his comments.
Okay.
I would just like to add, one of my volunteer boards is the Convention Visitors Bureau. Do you know that Council Bluffs in Pot County has had more visitors and more tourism dollars spent for the last three years than Okoboji and some of the other communities and this has been because of the public art? I've also traveled many, I've been, we hear the comments all the time. I would also add that I've traveled many neighborhoods in preparation for this. I would also add that I've traveled many neighborhoods in preparation for this election. And I have people that have moved here from Omaha because they're artists and they're part of the artist community and they see what is happening here in Council Bluffs and they want to be a part of that. So, I'm very proud.
Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, who's doing Broadway? Isn't that Iowa West?
No.
Who's doing it?
The City of Council Bluffs received funds from the state when we took over West Broadway to rebuild West Broadway. Any beautification aspects of West Broadway, we requested a grant to cover those funds that would be needed to do that.
So, the City of Council Bluffs takes two or three years to resurface 12 blocks?
Absolutely, and you know why? It's because the businesses wanted to stay open while we did it.
It still shouldn't take that long. That's ridiculous.
I'm sure they'd appreciate that.
Still on the same question I answered, right? All right. So, I'm going to go here. You know, here's the thing, Iowa West does some great things in this community. Are they polarizing? Absolutely. You know, they absolutely are. But I think it's the role of the city council and city government to work with our largest foundation in town, the people holding a significant amount of money, and try to figure out the best way possible to put that money to work for the people of Council Bluffs. That was the intent when the casinos came to town, as I understand it.
It was.
Okay. You know, so we have to do that. And I'm not saying that you three folks that are up for reelection aren't doing that. I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is, we need to continue to push the envelope and try to figure out how to get those dollars to work for the people of Council Bluffs even better and let Iowa West celebrate their wins, of which there are many. Okay, they, I would agree, they need to do a better job.
Thank you. Iowa West Foundation is a great foundation and a great asset to the City of Council Bluffs. Since they're not elected, obviously they should not be making decisions for the city and play a role in the elections. Along with their mission, Iowa West Foundation has proven to be very valuable through their leadership and partnership with the city to identify needs. Where our city council has elected officials, we should be making decisions that the citizens in the community of Council Bluffs have elected us to do. But we should do that with the support and help of information gathering from organizations such as Iowa West as well.
All right. Robert, you're going to have a chance to run with this one?
This is my question?
This is your question. What is your view on changing the election of city council members from at-large seats to by district?
Oh, I thought it was going to be the other question, this is not my question, but anyways... Yeah. And so, I don't think we need to reduce Council Bluffs into districts for elections. And if we did, if we do, I would say, an independent body to do that, that is, an independent body that has nobody's currently active on any committee for any of the political parties, so that's include some of us in this room. So, but anyways, I would be technically, I'd be actually against district choosing Council Bluffs because Council Bluffs already has a low turnout for voting because a lot of people prefer to make jokes about Council Bluffs because Council Bluffs has made some bad decisions in the past. So, when I was doing some research for this, somebody did a joke, we have a town council? I had a Facebook group that was in for a while. Anyways, I had, there was, I got a lot of jokes out of that, but I mean, put the city council.
So, I believe an at-large system is a good impartial system and it rises above the limited perspective of a single district focus. I think that when council members are elected by district seat, there is a risk that they're not going to be impartial. And there's also a risk of vote trading between council members. And my research showed that communities that have district elections spend a lot more money because each of those council people are pulling for just worrying about their district and trying to get more money in their district. So, I wouldn't be in favor of it.
I would agree with what Sharon said, according to my research. And I'm also, when I'm walking the neighborhoods, I'm asking people, do you want to go to the wards, to separate wards, or do you like the at-large? And it's really a matter of, do you want three votes or do you want one vote? And most people, you know, particularly with the history of the council, we do have a bit of a concentration in the existing council, but they don't feel like there's been any favoritism to any part of the city or anything like that. So, you know, I really feel like it's working well and unless there's some situation where we see something that there's concern about, there is not good representation in all parts of the city, I probably would continue with the plan as is.
I'll be very frank with you, districts would be great for me personally, but they'd be bad for the city. And I'll tell you what, first, why they'd be good for me, I'm a block and a half from Second and West Broadway, I'm in the center. I'm in the area that I was the neighborhood president of and founded, and I'm in the center of the historic core of the neighborhoods, which I led. I know these people and I don't mean to be presumptuous, but I think I'd have a leg up. And in past elections, I think you'll see that that is one of my main bases of support. If I only had to worry about that part of town instead of thinking of the city as a whole, I'd probably get elected every time that I ever wanted to run. Is that a good thing? Probably not. Is it a sort of thing that I would think about what's good for the city as a whole? No, because you didn't vote for me. I don't care what you think. Right? That's what the average politician would say when they run. And if you look at, and that's something I've studied in my career and my education, is that it leads to a situation where people care about their own area, but at the same time they do what we call in political science, log rolling, where you vote for my thing, I'll vote for your thing, we raise the cost for all taxpayers so we all get elected, instead of thinking of the whole. And you only get one vote instead of five. Not a good idea for you, great for me and other people running. I just think it's a bad idea.
Everybody's research is the same, so. It's really, I mean, they're all right, but everybody's, we all do the research. I don't think it'd be good for the citizens of Council Bluffs. I think the at-large is the only way to go. The only election I've been in was last, 2015, in the fall, the top vote getter. As Nate said, he'll tell you, he won his district, even though at that time I lived in his district, so. He let me know, but I was the top vote getter.
He let me know that too.
At this election, I did let him know that. And I think at-large is a less effective community.
This is a pretty, pretty consistent question, a series of answers. I am much more in favor of the at-large, for the reasons mentioned up here before, but I'm just going to reiterate a couple of the ones most important to me. And the fact that, you know, as a representative and servant on the city council, I serve the entire city. And it's always my focus to look at the entire city and what decision I make and the impact it would have on the city as a whole, not just one particular small area. So, I think you run the risk, if you go by district, that your representative would only think of you and not the whole city. And we, that doesn't lead to a healthy city. You have to all grow together or you don't.
Well, I guess I am rebel with a cause. Look west, young man, look west. Omaha, Nebraska, district election. Now, isn't that strange? It works somewhere in a city about 10 times bigger than ours. And they say it doesn't work, it does work. I couldn't remember when I was on the city council and we had beefline down there and you couldn't step out your back door without vomiting. We fought to get that mess cleaned up. But those that lived up on Kenmore Avenue had absolutely no idea what we were talking about. In fact, at one time, you could stand at the bottom of Kenmore Avenue, you could throw a golf ball and you could hit every member of the city council. Do you think that's fair representation? I don't. And what about the poor guy or girl wants to have a voice on our city or city council? They can't afford it. But when we put so many districts or wards within a city and say, we are going to elect somebody from these wards, whether they can afford it or not, so we're going to get somebody out of that ward to represent that ward or district. I think it's really the true representation and we see it everywhere. It's in your congress, in your senate, and it's in the majority of cities.
So, you know, I believe where you live is not a qualification, it's what are you doing for your community? So, you know, right now, we all got the same amount of signatures roughly, that's the qualification. If you want to be on the ballot, hit the streets, get some signatures. So, if it's what's in front of us today, I'm fine with that. We all did the same thing, right? But ultimately, if you feel differently, I would encourage you to take a petition up. If it's the will of the citizens, then who are we to stand in its way?
May I ask the IRS to stand up, please? Stretch the legs a little bit.
Okay.
I think being at-large is pretty cool personally because I got to represent all of you and not just people that I love. And I think you guys need to just stand up a little bit. It's been a long time, so.
Well, the at-large business seemed to work out as our size has not really changed in probably a century. But the question would become, where would we split things? You know, what denotes one section versus the other? At this point in time, I would say it probably does work out best to two things as we do, though I don't know if anyone else lives in Manalau, I guess, that, so it might work out well for me, but it's not, you know, it's not about me, it's about Council Bluffs. So, at this point, until we get to 10 times larger than what we are now, and even then, I don't know that that's the best solution. Omaha's kind of a mess, so.
They sure are growing.
There are more political arguments at Omaha City Council, and I went to...
No, it's not arguments, it's called a debate.
Yeah. But I recently, there was a plastic debate at Omaha and basically, the plastic bill was stopped because the, a Democratic candidate over there for a downtown area put a measure into the bill that the mayor there won, and then she vetoed next day.
Who are you talking to?
Okay, so, earlier this year, there was a, there was a plastic law for, against plastic bag, bags banned. I spoke against it because I'm against bans, letting these, there was...
What does bags have to do with this discussion?
You're talking about this, no, we, the, you can clearly, I clearly heard each of the, about each person in the district, or which person, which party they were with, just by this, those are in arguments for this one issue. Because all the Democrats were supporting the ban and all the Republicans were against it. So, districts actually, in reality, makes more of a politicize.
Thank you for the example.
Well, I don't, I, he changed topics so many times, I couldn't...
That's right.
He was talking about plastic bags and...
Let's roll onto the next question. Sharon, this one's for you.
All right, so what are we going to do?
Let's do the privatization of public services.
Well, that's the one that I had the longest answer for.
Fantastic. Privatization of public services lowers the, lowers the wage of employees, lowers our top place, and lowers the quality of service. What is your stance on outsourcing city services?
Okay, so, most, most government entities, including cities, states, counties, they do look at privatization as a way to save taxpayer money. I do believe that there are some areas that it works really well. I got an email this morning about how somebody couldn't support me because of putting the golf course under private management, which is fine, but I will tell you that now the city has reduced their $300,000 loss to $43,000 in the last year. Those are areas where we can save the taxpayer money. Only 20% of the residents of Council Bluffs use that golf course, and yet your tax dollars were being used to fund a $300,000 shortfall. So, I believe in that decision, I believe it was a good one to privatize that through private management. We do that with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, with economic development. We contract that out to organizations that do it full-time. It keeps us from having to pay as much money because they often partner with the county. Advance is one that partners with the county. I think actually the Convention and Visitors Bureau does too. So, it saves the county taxpayers, it saves the city taxpayers. I think that's good. I would never think it's okay to privatize fire and police. That is not something you can privatize. I need to know those decisions are made in the best interest of the citizens, not in the best interest of making a buck.
Mike, are you at 30 or 50?
I was, well, I did 30 for the first one, sorry. I'm new at this.
30 and then 50.
50.
50.
I did, I got kind of short, it felt like... I rushed her, it's good.
She still got 60.
I still got 60. You just gave you your nose at 30. A minute goes way faster than you think. Well, this is a tough question, and I would say every situation requires very in-depth consideration for each one of these. And I think some good decisions have been made in the past with some of the privatization. And yet, you know, I think as we're looking at lower unemployment rates, it's going to be difficult to contract or to employ employees to do certain things and we might be forced to look at privatization. So, again, I'm going to stay with, I think that this is a difficult answer, or a difficult question, to give a blanket answer, yes or no. I think every situation is unique in that you have to carefully consider each one of the factors that contribute to it and make certain that it's good for all citizens in Council Bluffs and that we're watching our taxpayer dollars wisely.
I believe in the traditional model of the United States, which is core governmental services are a function of the government. At least they have been since the late 19th century, including locally. That includes police and fire. I think those are core functions that have to be under the direct employment of the city. Certain things are better done by business. And a lot of business is union, a lot of business is non-union. So, I see that as benefiting both or potentially benefiting both equally. At the end of the day, taking for example, as Sharon White indicated, the golf course. In my own mind, I have to say, like a lot of people in town, I have never golfed once in my life, if you don't count putt-putt, and I don't. I come from a family of bowlers, right? And I wasn't very good at it, and still am not very good at it, but that's what we did and occasionally still do. But at the, at the end of the day, I, when I look at those sorts of things, I have to decide, are those the sorts of things where there's already a private market for it? Should we be competing against it without having to pay taxes? I just don't think that is a good option.
So, this is a tough question. Privatizing jobs, as I said before, our employees are a biggest asset. The city does a good job, right now we do outsource some things and some things we keep in-house. I voted against privatizing the golf course, for instance. I'll tell you, as Sharon said, we now, I was wrong, we have now corrected a over $300,000 loss to less than $100,000. And that is something that still has mixed reviews. I think the golf course does a good job, it's golfed down there several times. The course is in good shape, we had some interstate things, but it's in, it's in good shape. I think we have to get better at evaluating if it's something that the private sector can do better than we can, just as myself as a city council member, we have to get better every day at what, at what we're doing and educating ourselves, so I think we can continue to go back down, but right now we do a good job.
Well, I believe our city staff really do an excellent job in providing services and essential services to our community. If, if outsourcing came up before me on the agenda, I would approach it like I approach any issue and analyze, gather information with an eye on what makes sense for the city and analyze, gather information with an eye on what makes sense for the city, what makes sense for the taxpayers. The decision would have to be something that benefits the city as a whole, not just one small, small group or contingency, but saving taxpayers' money without compromising the services that they're paying for, is what I would be looking at. Some things make sense, some things do not. Somebody very mentioned police and fire, obviously, that would never be outsourced. But we outsourced sanitation, so I think that's perfectly reasonable.
Well, I don't think I would go to privatization, although we are, our garbage collection is privatization, isn't it? So, you know, you can't say I absolutely would not, I mean, but I would certainly maintain public safety, fire, and police. I think that, you know, in public works, we've got guys that run snowplows, we've got guys that are out there working to patch all these potholes and things, so I would not be enthusiastic about privatization. We've got some good employees, it takes a long time to train them.
No, it's just drawn to the back of my chair. You know, I think you can't really make a blanket statement, right? So you gotta treat it on a case-by-case basis. You know, one, one thing that I take in approach to when we're bidding out projects at work, which is something that falls directly under me, all things need to be equal when you're looking at bidding. What goes into it? What are your fixed costs? What are your labor costs? What are, what's every cost piled together? And it's, I think it's the duty of the city council, of the city government, to make sure that we are responsible stewards of our tax dollars, but that doesn't mean taking jobs from folks that hold them currently. I think what that means to me is, you sit down, you bring everyone to the table, show your cards, and then you say, all right, at the end of the day, this is the best value, this is the best craftsmanship, and this is the best overall product that we can buy, and then you see where it takes us from there.
Privatization of public services, I think could be a really bad idea, because by the city owning, they're often managing their own public services, the city has more flexibility and control, and can maintain a much higher standard of work. And I know personally, we have a lot of really proud city workers, and they do do really good work, and a lot of them are certified and really know what they're doing.
No, that's not a good idea, privatization. And again, like everyone up here said, pretty much, every, everything is case-by-case basis. But when it comes to the city, obviously, fire, obviously, police, but, you know, as he said earlier, public works as well. I mean, if we outsource things, an easy example, we talked about Omaha multiple times tonight, you guys remember when they outsourced or privatized their snow removal? They had guys running plow trucks that were running all night long, they had no accountability, a girl got run over, she died. Turns out, not safe, not a good idea. Not only does it put people out of work that are in our community, it allows people, and a lot of other great folks to come in and take those jobs, it also allows people to undercut folks that are, again, our neighbors, you know? It removes what, what small control we have in our community to make sure that we do have that quality of workmanship, we do have control over what it is that's going on in our borders.
Okay, so with privatization, the golf course has been mentioned, major services, so let's talk about the golf course. The golf course, we have privatized it, but the city still owns the golf course, and we basically hired a third company to come in and manage the golf course. We should actually, in our way, it sounded from last city council meeting when it was talked about on the budget, it sounds they were thinking about they would have actual grill sets down the road. With sets, we in the future sell the golf course, and that will privatize, although a lot of people wouldn't be huge privatization, they'd get nervous. There's, there are many examples throughout the United States, in Roblesville, privatization of working. Trail National Railway was privatized in 1980, uh, 1987. Now it's one of the best railways, railways in the whole country, and UK had oil completely governed from control, and it was privatized, and BP's one of the biggest companies, they had a big accident in their golf, we all know about, and I'm pretty sure, I think I, I think I over federally.
Deb, we are going to go to question... The last one on the board's page, it flows on to the next one, because that's the easiest one for me, right? The 2017 collective bargaining bill includes a section that forces unionized employees to go through an election to recertify their, their union on the expiration of their contract. The elections are burdensome, expensive, and repetitive. Unfortunately, the city has decided to make the unions go through this process this year, even ones that recertified by 99% last year. Would you openly support joining other local governments around the state by not participating in the recertification process? There is no penalty for not participating, and the units automatically recertify.
Well, I certainly, I too was a member of the nurses' union when I was a registered nurse at Jenny Anderson, so I certainly understand unions and the need and support collective bargaining. This is somewhat of an unusual scenario, this recertification, and it's because of the attempt to try to online all the agreements that the city is negotiating, and so they asked for this recertification on this annual basis for this time, and I think that is a little bit redundant and probably completely unnecessary. I do think it's important that the union and its members have an opportunity to verify that they are delivering what they need to deliver as far as their members, and that there is an opportunity at some point to recertify. What is that magic number? I would probably go with contract terms or whatever, at least three years, if not five. So, you know, I certainly understand that this was an unusual situation, and there was a 99% recertification vote last, last time around, and so probably not necessary to repeat again.
Would I support going along with certain other local governments across the state who have chosen to ignore the state law? No, because I have an oath of office to follow the law. Would I support changing the law? Yes, I would. I do think that, first of all, I need to know, as a matter of statutory construction, which is just legal speak for how laws work with one another, when a particular law doesn't have a penalty built in it, there's a default standby penalty in state law. In this case, the default is a simple misdemeanor. So if I break that law, I've created a simple misdemeanor, and by the way, because I'm doing it as an official city council member, you have to pay for it, not me. I'm on the view, you're not. So no, I'm not gonna break the law. Do I think the state, certain folks at the state level, and the politicians in Des Moines engaged in activities to make it, recertifications happen too often, some of which were doing so for the purpose of union busting? Yeah, I do. I think that's what they were doing, a lot of them said so. I think every so often, you need not to show that it still has the support of its members, and that they want that particular union, but I, I would be much more supportive every five or 10 years, not every year. But that has to be done at the state level, I'm not gonna promise stuff I can't deliver to you.
So, under the current law, when the contract comes up, if, the union is required to recertify if it's sent per. There are over 80 entities in the state of Iowa that have elected to not require the unions to recertify. Do I think that we should not have them recertify every, every year? No, it's not just forever. At some point, yes, whether that's five years, or 10 years, or three years, they, they should have to recertify, but I do not think they should recertify every year.
I think every year is, seems to be a burden and overreaching, and I think the key is to have the union people, the city people, reach out to the Iowa elected officials, and have those tough conversations, so that, well, they tried, they don't listen, is that the deal?
Might have had a conversation with them once or twice.
Well, I mean, but you gotta keep trying. You don't, you don't, I mean, in my business, you know, you're told no so many times, but you just keep pushing. And I'm, I'm kind of a bulldog, so that's, that's the way I would act on the city council, is I'm a bulldog, and if I, if I put my mind to it, and I want to see something done, within reason, I'm not the psycho, but I, you know, I, I'm, I have, I have a high level of persistence, and that's what I would do.
I don't think the unions should have to recertify every year, and why do you want to beat up on the unions? They're just trying to make a buck.
All right, so, every year is nuts, right? We have, based on the question here, and, and I'll admit, I'm not an expert in unions or recertification or anything like that, what I do know is, the question said that, you know, one, one union recertified at 99% last year. Why are we making it so difficult for these folks to just do their job, and do what they are contractually trying, you know, what they've committed to do? So, you know, it says in here that there is not a penalty for not participating, Nate says that's not the case, I would defer to the city attorney, I suppose, in that situation, but as the question is written here, no, I don't support that. Why, why are we making it so difficult for folks trying to do their job?
Union bastard.
I guess everyone's pretty right on this topic. It definitely seems incumbent to continue doing that every year. I know personally, I have to recertify as well for my design of profession. We do it every two or three years, so I don't know, maybe that's something for the union to do as well.
As the question's posed...
The microphone's busted.
Made it this long, old chef.
I'm not an A G expert by any means.
Talk a lot, Neil.
Talk a lot.
All right, time to yell.
So, as the question's posed, if it doesn't matter one way or the other, I don't see a need, you know? If you don't like what your unions do, do something else. I guess in my opinion, the recertification thing seems a little silly. Like I said, it's, it's up to them. There's no need to have the government come in and tell their organization how to run. I guess, just small government sometimes, you know, I don't know. So, that's what I got on that one.
It doesn't work out. I just saw it as off, like, this is what the city is doing. Okay, so, um, yeah, this law, you guys have been talking about, it is union busting law, and needs to be changed, because there should not be anything, there's any union that formed in the private sector, or if there's like, cities who probably want to join a union, there should be nothing stopping them here to join a union. It's, um, so, we, we know the state of Iowa, has, the Republicans have controlled it for the last past 10 years, and then the state of Iowa has taken a lot of, lot of stuff away from cities and counties, because they think they know what's best for us. So, the Republicans say that it's for small governments, but it's for unions, they want to control the unions. That makes literally, intellectually, no sense to me, and I'm a literati, so, I will, hope that's, you guys, um, so, I am against this law. Have a nice...
So, because I actually currently serve on the city council, when you take the oath of office, part of the oath is that you take an oath to hold the federal, state, and local laws. Because it was made into a law, I can't tell you that I would go against that law, but what I can tell you is I would openly support changing it. I think it's overly cumbersome, I totally agree that it was union busting, and I would stand side by side with the union, and talk to our state legislature to change that, because it is not necessary every year. I too agree with some others who said, you know, once in a while, yes, I don't know what that number is, which is a union, they need to know what their membership would like, maybe it's five years, I don't know, but I would stand with you on that, but I can't, I cannot intentionally break the law after taking an oath on it.
All right, thank you all. In the respect of time, what we're gonna do is, we'll give you one minute to close with any thoughts, and unfortunately... It's 10 to 10:00. So we'll start with Nate, and we'll work back through, and you get one minute closing thoughts.
Well, I want to thank the Western Iowa Federation of Labor, the Council Plus Community Alliance, and all of the residents for coming out tonight to hear all the candidates, and I want to thank all my fellow candidates. I know that we all go through a lot of shoe leather, or sheers themselves, in this, putting ourselves forward to set forth what we believe to be one of your representatives, and so I really think, one of the things I'd like to do is ask you to give a hand to all the candidates who really put themselves... The only thing I really want to add to, from what I've said earlier tonight, is one of the things is, I greatly believe in empowering small groups. I primarily tend to focus on neighborhoods, but not just limited to neighborhoods, and so one of the pledges that I make to you is, I will increase my donations and give the rest of my council salary. So next year, I would agree to donate for all four years, an additional $5,000 a year towards neighborhood grants, which I would not administer to make certain that they were done fairly, I would use an existing structure, I think they're that important. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed, thank you for putting this on, thank you all for coming tonight. This is not an easy job, as Nate, Sharon, and Lynn can tell you, she was on the first three times as well, and Ron.
Seventy-eight, you said?
So, and Ron was on it too, so, it's not an easy job, we're all up here doing the best we can. I think everybody that sits up there now does the best they can for the community, and truly wants what's best for Council Bluffs. I'd ask for your vote, October 5th, and October 8th, and November 5th, folks around. I love the responsibility to be your councilman from here.
Well, I want to start out by thanking everyone for being here this evening, and also, I asked for your vote on October 8th. Just a few highlights, you know, I look at my 36 years in community service, my 12 years on the city council, I'm a small business owner, so I run all aspects of my business. If, if elected, I will continue to be a loud, independent, and objective voice, and I will continue to be active and visible city council member out in the, in the community. You know, I've lived here since 1974, I love Council Bluffs, I'm committed to Council Bluffs, and I want to do whatever I can do to make our city better, so, thanks.
Yes, I would just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and I think the real challenge is to grow our taxpayers. When I was mayor in 78, we had a little over 65,000 people, and right now, we're struggling to hang on to 62,000. I also think that when I was looking at Mall of the Bluffs and the new post office... I also think that when I was looking at Mall of the Bluffs and the new post office, I watched those craters get worse and worse and worse and worse. Finally, I got to the city attorney, and we discussed absentee landlords, and that was brought up before here in kind of a humorous manner. But in that situation, with all the foods and the banks and the mall itself, it became very bad. So after I talked to Dick Wade, the city attorney, he looked it up, and by golly, it was there. We worked on it in a seven weeks, and it allowed the city crews to go in there and start filling some of those potholes. Remember what the post office looked like? And what it looked like around Kentucky Fried Chicken and Banks, McDonald's, Ivy? A lot of those potholes ruined the craters, well, they're filled now and it's safe, but it was terrible all spring, terrible all summer. But the absentee landlord thing, Council Plus, is a bad thing, and we've really got to address it.
Like everyone else, thank you for coming out, this is a very impressive crowd, so thank you for taking the time out of your evening. Anything else that you could be doing right now to come and listen to the 10 of us, try to explain what we can do to continue to push this community forward. For myself, I believe that my community experience has really spoken for itself. I love this town, this town's provided a lot for me, for my family, and I think the time is now for me to take the leadership role forward, to continue to do that for the next generation, and the generations before me. So I'll close with, I humbly ask for your vote, please support Chad Anon on October 8th, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Darren Scott, I appreciate you all being here tonight. Ask for your vote on October 8th, and I look forward to seeing the polls. Have a good night.
Thank you everyone for coming. Make sure that stat about 1978. It's 2019, and we're smaller than according to that. What's going to happen in 10 years, 15 years, 20 years? 50 years from now, I mean, I had a discussion the other day with folks about goal, and I said, oh, Joe, you're looking 10, 15 years, you're looking long-term. I said, no, you're looking short-term. 10 or 15 years, I'll still be here, you might not be, but my kids are going to just get out of school. We need to look at 50 years, 100 years. We're almost in the middle of the day. I'll leave you with three things. We need to grow, we need to watch and maintain public safety, there's some aspects that we could work on, it would have been nice to have one over tonight, but there's not in our questions, and then overall, city infrastructure maintenance, we got some of that, as pertains to roads, but we also need to discuss the elephant more or less in the room, as all of our basements are filling with water, and levees are blowing up north and south of town, if we don't watch ourselves, it will soon be us as well. So, with that, again, thank everyone for coming, and I appreciate your votes in the primary, and then again, in the general, in November.
So, I ran for the city council race, big voice of liberty on the city council. I have fought for my ideas the last couple of years, maybe you have seen me out in public fight for my ideas of liberty. I feel like faced down the challenges of what councils face, and when I was putting in signatures, one of the biggest questions that wasn't addressed here was the roads, was the, how are we going to fix the roads? And I just listened to the council currently, they have an inbox thinking towards roads because they've been in governments a lot. I'm, I have an outbox thinking towards government, because I'm more of a pro-liberty, if you wanted, approach to governance. So, I'm, so I need you to support on October 8th, and I'd like to be on the ballot for November 5th to be your voice on the city council for governing. And thank you for listening.
I too want to thank you all for coming out tonight, I know you've been sitting at home, having a nice long dinner, and it's Dej and down here with us, so we all appreciate that. What I want to let you know is, we didn't get to cover a couple of the questions, and most of those questions required much longer than one minute to adequately answer, so I'm going to post those on my Facebook page and my website, and you can go there to read the full answers. Like I say, most of these issues are much more in-depth than you can do in one minute. The one thing I didn't get a chance to say is that there's a group I do want to give a shout out to, and that is our public works. I know that the neighbors, I know that everybody knows that it has been a really rough year, between the hard winter we had with the potholes, the spring with all of the rain. I don't think that most of us realize what they do every single day to keep us safe. They've taken over a lot of the jobs that would normally be contracted out, one, due to lack of contractors, and two, because they're awesome, and they do a really great job. They've done over 17 overlays already this year, so although I know that you'll find those spots in the road that might not be in perfect shape, please, when you see your public works, people out there working, wave to them, please say hi and please say thank you. They work every day for you. So, go on my website, you'll see the rest of the answers to the questions. Well, I want to thank you too for being here, I also think it's incredible that you have 10 candidates to choose from. And once again, I think we tend to focus on the negative and some of the challenges that we have, but there's really lots of good things happening in Council Plus, and I would say from the visits I have with department heads, community leaders, there are many, many people that are committed to doing a good job each and every day, including our public works folks, and I would echo just what Sharon said. I thought it was unfortunate that we couldn't get to the two questions about voter turnout and community involvement, because I will tell you, voter turnout with 10 candidates, it's really going to be sad, because the difference between those that are going to be considered on November 5th and those that aren't could be a difference of five or six votes. So please, tell your neighbors, tell your friends, when I'm canvassing neighborhoods, that is my closing statement, vote October 8th. And finally, community involvement, if you're not involved in the community and you want to serve the city council, how do you know what's going on in your community? I bring 25-plus years of community volunteerism, I run businesses, I've built organizations, I would greatly appreciate your support, I welcome the opportunity to serve the city Council Plus, so a vote on October 5th would be greatly appreciated, thank you.
I'd like to take this time to apologize, since there are 10 of you, if we can't get it down to one minute, or else we'll answer two questions and be out of here tonight, okay? So I do apologize. I'd like to thank all of you for coming out, thank you for representing or stepping up to run for the cause, thank you Scott, thank you Mike, thank you to the Council Plus Community Alliance, and the Western Iowa Leadership Federation. And that, the end.